Here. Councilmember Cody.
Here.
Councilmember Harples.
Here.
Councilmember Bittsby.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tamsary.
Here.
Councilmember Whitliff.
Here.
Councilmember Gustin.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
And DPW Director.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and gender-related items, this portion of the meeting, if anyone in attendance would like to comment on tonight's agenda, please come forward. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval minutes, approval payroll, cash balances report, notification regarding next work session, and consideration of downtown development authority membership. Their motion to take action.
I'll make a motion that council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll sort it.
Have a motion by councilmember Harples, support by Mayor Pro Tamsary, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Can you please take the roll? Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Harples?
Yes.
Councilmember Bittsby?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none, new business. Consideration of utility service contract with Meyer Realty Company and Goodwill Company Incorporated. The contract between the city of Manistee, Meyer Realty Company, and Goodwill Company Incorporated has been negotiated to provide water and sewer utilities to the proposed new store at the corner of M-55 and US-31 in Manistee Township. The contract includes connection fees, establishes utility rates, and a 17-year payment schedule. City Attorney George Saylor and City Utility Attorney Scott Smith have reviewed and approved this contract. Is there a motion to approve the utility service contract?
I'll make a motion that council take action to approve the utility service contract with Meyer Realty and Goodwill Company, Inc. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract.
Support. Have a motion by councilmember Harples and support by Mayor Pro Tamsary to approve utility service contract. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, could you kind of go over the specifics of it?
Sure. We were approached by Myers last February, or somewhere in that timeframe, to start having conversations about providing utilities. At that location, we currently have water and sewer available at that location. We have had conversations with Myers, we provided them with some sample contracts, and the negotiations really started in earnest about three to four weeks ago, where we met with representatives from the Meyer Real Estate Firm, which is a holding part of the company of the Myers Corporation. We discussed the contract for us to provide utility service agreements. There were certain provisions of the agreement that we had made with other entities that they were unwilling to accept. And we started the process of working through that with them. What we have come up with here is a negotiated agreement between Myers and the city of Manistee. For any of us who negotiate for a living, we all know that it's not a one-sided event. It's always a give and take going backwards and forwards. We started at 20 years, they countered at 15 years, we ended up at 17 years. We started at a 2% escalator on an annual basis moving forward. They countered with a 10% escalator every five years to avoid that ratcheting up of the system. It's clear to me that the community is desirous of having Meyer here in this location. We all know that we are, as a county, leaking about $42 to $48 million on an annual basis, of retail basis, leaking out of Manistee County into neighboring counties. And the intent on this was to help close that gap. Would you like me to go into the details of the contract, or just some of the...
I'm fine, I read it, not unless somebody else wants to.
I do have one question though, because it is a... Excuse me, there's the 2% or 10% every five years. Well, so that would be 5, 10, 15, what happens to the years 16 and 17? Is that because we will renegotiate the contract at that time?
If you look at the payment schedule in there, it actually increases years 16 and 17. There's an escalator for year 16 and 17. Year 1 through 5 is $22,000. Year 6 through...
16, 17, see the same price.
6 through 10 is $24,200. It escalates to 26, 620 from year 11 through 15, and through 16, 17, it escalates to $29,282. And the agreement was clear that that is to offset the city for other subsidies which have gone into the water and sewer utility fund in the past.
We will still own the lines?
Absolutely. These will be considered laterals. Just like recently we've done with Mr. Keith Housky, I think it was Water and Sewer. I don't recall exactly which one we did very recently with their new crematorium on the old former Maury's. That's a lateral, so these will be considered laterals. Mr. Kenny?
Let me clarify that for a second. The sanitary sewer will have both a service that goes straight to the grocery store itself, but then there's also an internal main that will be privately owned that serves the convenience store or the gas station. The water main that they were proposing had three separate taps, and their biggest reason is for fire flow, but it created very long dead ends. So we've actually been working with their engineers since February of 2013, and last Friday just received some updated plans. Whereas opposed to having those very long laterals and having dead water, we've gotten them to actually put a loop through the site. So there will be a 10-inch water main loop that will become the city of Manistee, and we'll have easements to maintain it. The construction cost will be bore by the Meyer Corporation, but then we'll take over maintenance and we'll have control to make sure that we can keep that water clean and sanitary.
And I had one final question. You mentioned the convenience station, gas station combination. Are there any other outlets?
There, if you look at the agreement on page...
So we don't have to worry about...
I'm gonna find it real quick here. There are no other outlets on that lot. The only outlaw that they have out there is the gas station, and we identified that specifically in here as the gas station rather than outlets.
Okay.
There's a parcel of property that is actually the corner that is owned by Northwestern Bank.
Yeah, I know.
It's not an outlet to the Meyer Corp., and that already has a water service to it, and already has sewer service adjacent to it. Within the grocery store, within their store, there are other leasable spaces that they have, but there are no specific outlets on the parcel.
Okay.
Good question. Do we have any agreement with Meyer with fire protection? Anything like that?
This particular contract does not cover other ancillary services. How that would be covered is the reciprocal agreement that we have for fire protection with Manistee Township and probably Charter Township and stuff. Often we're contacted to assist. One of the advantages that the city of Manistee has that some of the neighboring townships do not have is you have the only aerial ladder truck in Manistee County. So often that aerial ladder truck, if there's a large fire, will be contacted and called out to assist our neighbors, both north and south, and Astronik, Eastlake, wherever we need to be.
The fire hydrants that will be on-site will be owned by the city of Manistee. We'll maintain them as part of our system like we do with all the other ones, and they'll meet our specifications as well.
I know this isn't part of this agreement, but I've been asked if Myers or Manistee Township couldn't do something with the roads out there to address the increased traffic flow.
I have reviewed the plans with the engineers. They have substantial upgrades to both US-31 and M-55 adjacent to their property to handle all the traffic movements. And it's my understanding that they've worked with M.D., and M.D. has approved those designs.
I know, early in the Meyer meetings out of Manistee Township, they said Meyer would take care of the road improvements. To the 2 and 1/2 million? No, I'm sorry, 500 million?
Yeah, there'll be widening, specific turning lanes added. Substantial, that's all bore by the...
On 55 and 31.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
No, I think it's a good, a good agreement.
Thank you. So, can you please take the roll? Councilmember Harples?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Bittsby?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tamsary?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustin?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Next we'll move on to notices, communications, announcements. Tonight we'll hear from Mr. Mike Terry, who will report on activities at the Ramsdale Governing Authority.
Good evening, Mayor Kenny, councilman, and women. I've been asked to give an update on the Ramsdale Governing Authority and the Ramsdale Theater. And so the Ramsdale Governing Authority consists of Nancy Lyne, the president, Harry Schubach. She's the president of the Manistee Arts Institute, Ed Bradford, the treasurer for the city, Brian Garcia, a member-at-large, Joanne Mima, who's the executive director of the Manistee Civic Players, Tom Steege, and Rick Richter. We've had two resignations in the last two, three weeks. Nancy Lyne has resigned, and Rick Richter has resigned, so we have two vacancies. And I would like to give special recognition to Nancy. I know she's, you guys probably know her much better than I do, but she's been a longtime chair of the Ramsdale Restoration Committee, Friends of the Ramsdale, she's been acting in the Civic Players as the director, and she established the endowment fund. And just on a personal, she has been so good to my wife and I since moving here, so I really want to give her lots of love. So thank you very much, Nancy. And we're gonna miss her. I should say, she is gonna hang on as a resource if we need to talk to her, you know, what's going on in the past, and she's agreed to do that, so. Operations policy is the Ramsdale Governing Authority. Staff by the city. Programming is the user groups, renters of cities. Maintenance is custodial city. Administration city. And then fundraising is Friends of the Ramsdale and the executive director, so that's one of the things you brought me here for. Looking forward to that. Staff, myself, and we have one part-time person, Sarah. We have various site managers and technical people, and that's something we're gonna be addressing as we're going forward. We need a little bit more capacity there. And then the city staff, Ed, Heather, and Mark Hanson, who takes care of building maintenance. User groups. Manistee Civic Players, Manistee Arts Institute. In many ways, they are the Ramsdale Theater. They've been there for a long time, they do lots of activities, so they're very, very important parts of the Ramsdale Theater, and I can't say that enough as a new person. Ingrid Bond is still with us, teaching dance classes. Annette Jersewick does music classes, ballroom dance. The Conservatory of Dance has been a regular customer for many years, and they've got a couple events this year. And the Chamber of Commerce, we just had the festival trees, my first time, so that was a lot of fun. And the Benzii Community Chorus, they booked again, and they're regular users year after year, so those are kind of our main customers. And again, the Manistee Civic Players, they had about 4,300 ticket sales last year, about $86,000 in ticket sales. 150-plus participants, and they represent about 76% of the theater use. So I can't stress again how important the Civic Players are to the Ramsdale Theater. They're not enough to keep everything open, but they're a really, really important part of what goes on there. Also, the Manistee Arts Institute, I mean, you can see the list of different activities they put on through the year. A lot is going on. And some of the things that they do that's really great, like if the Civic Players have a show going on or festival of the trees, they'll open up their exhibits, so that really increases the experience for someone coming to a play. At intermission, they can go down and see some artwork, so that's really valuable. It just makes a more attractive, more meaningful experience for everybody who comes. And they have like 225 members, so they have a pretty good-sized membership. And they had 6,000 different patrons sign into their guestbook going through the exhibits, so that's a lot of activity, a lot of participation. Again, mention Ingrid Bond, dance classes, Annette, music classes, ballroom dance classes. Rentals, we had about $26,000 in rentals in the grand ballroom, about $7,000 in the theater, Hardy Hall. But, and most of those are weddings, also festival trees, Conservatory of Dance is part of that. Wedding bookings are up about 100% since you quit air conditioning it. Instead, we're up about 20, up to 24 this year. And I expect that before long, we're gonna be maxed out on the number of weddings that we can do, probably around 35, 40 is probably, I mean, the max, just because of the dates and the time and everything that's going on. So I could see that happening, and that's mostly in the ballroom. Ramsdale Presents, the city Ramsdale presents, has been presenting a little night music. They did 13 events last year, and that's mostly been roots and booze music. So that's kind of a single discipline kind of genre, and it's been somewhat supportive. Attendance 1,000, so 13 events, that kind of tells you how many people per event. Might be some other opportunities. Ticket revenue about 17 grand. And they also, a very successful event that we're talking about doing again next, this coming March, with Brian Garcia's, the All Music Fest. We're hoping we can make that into an annual big deal, kind of like coming out of a winter sort of thing, that we can bring lots of people together. And so we're really looking forward to that. Movies have been discontinued, I think, just out of respect for the Vogue and what's been going on there. That's something that we may want to talk about going forward, whether there's a place for us to do movies, certain kinds of movies. You know, maybe the Ramsdale can do musicals on Saturday afternoons or something like that, but something to talk about. We're also doing broadcasts of the Met Opera, we did 11 events last year. Attendance 1,44, about almost $5,000 worth in ticket revenue. It's a small group, but it's a very loyal group. You know, the same group of people shows up every time, and we actually make a little money on it, so it's not like we're in the negative. So it is a small thing, but it's something that seems, that people seem very supportive of. I have some capital improvements to last year, the HVAC system. We've had a few issues with that. Train is coming back this week for some training, and we hope to take care of that. This coming year, we're talking about looking at the understage where the dressing rooms are, that area, and renovating that area. There's a lot down there, it needs some upgrade. It's not very professional-looking, so that's something we're doing a walkthrough in a couple weeks and talk about, what is it that we really want to do, what makes sense? Ed tells me there's about $500,000 of capital improvement still needed at the Ramsdale. I'm not quite sure how that breaks down, but that's the number that we have. The endowment is at about $54,000 right now. Spendable reserve to maintain the previous work done, and so we have about $1,500 in 2014. This is something that Ed put together, has evolved over the years, and is kind of leading up to what I'll be talking about shortly. And I'm sure many of you are familiar with this, you know, the Royal Reserve Building way back when. It's had several different stages that it's gone through, and there's been a study about, from the Gerdin Study, looking at new century for the Ramsdale. There's also been the White Paper, and the White Paper resulted in me getting hired. And that White Paper talked about the background, the history, the capital needs, the program, the fundraising, and the executive director. And that was presented last February. So fundraising, that's one of the things that I've been asked to do, and Friends of the Ramsdale's kind of been inactive since the restoration. And so we just brought them back together for a couple meetings. We've had two meetings now. And one of the things that we really need to establish, because in order for me to go to fundraisers and talk to people, I need to be able to make a case, you know? I need to make a good case for their support. And so we really need to get a mission and values and a vision statement that we all agree on, that everyone involved says, "Yeah, this is really why the Ramsdale exists, this is why we're here, this is what we want to do." And so we can take that case and go to people and say, "Hey, we think this is really important, we think you want to support that." And so we can make that, make that case, and right now, I don't feel that we're in a position to do that. But are we really ready to do that, to make those kind of statements? Because right now, there's a lot of different things going on, and you have, like I've said over and over again tonight, and I've just been repeating, the Civic Players are a really important part of the Ramsdale Theater. The Institute of the Arts is really important, our rentals is really important. But of all the things we're doing, it's not enough to be sustainable over the long term. So that's what we have to address. So what is it gonna take? Who are we gonna have to get involved? What will the community support? Those are kind of the questions we have to ask. Now, Mike Terry can, you know, come here and say, "Well, in this community, they do this, and this community, they did that." But this community is different, so we really need to get the people together, the leaders in the community, to sit down and talk with each other, and with the Civic Players, and with the Institute of the Arts, and say, "Hey, what should the Ramsdale be about?" You know? Should we be the roots and booze capital of the world? Should people from all over the country fly to the Ramsdale to see Roots and Booze? Maybe, maybe it's something else. But it's gotta be something that the whole community's gonna support. So that's, that's where I'm at right now. It's like, I'm trying to get the people in town who care about the Ramsdale, who have something to say, that have, have some equity in the Ramsdale staying open, and contributing to the community, what the community's about. So, going right to, let's go to the next slide. So really, the whole goal of this, this process of getting other people involved and talking, because if I come up with a mission statement and value statement and vision statement, I can do that. There's thousands of really great ones out there, and I could do this for this community. But I'm not gonna get the investment from the community to follow through and make it happen. It's really important that the community comes together and talks about what they want the Ramsdale to be about. And once we get that kind of consensus, once the Civic Players and the Institute of the Arts and all the different groups that are in town that, you know, want to make the Ramsdale successful, have some kind of general idea of what will work and what we think can work, and we can find people that say, "Hey, yeah, that's great, that's really something we can support." You know, that's when we can start doing some of the strategic planning, making decisions about, you know, what kind of experiences that we want. You know, how do we make it really easy for other people to come and use the Ramsdale? I want to make it simple, so if somebody has an idea that they can come and talk to me, and I could say, "Oh, yeah, we can support you this way. We have the techies, we have the box office, we have the different things, you just bring your show in and we can take care of it." Or if you want to big, you know, do a big event in the ballroom, that we have the systems in place to make it really, really easy for them to use it. People we have involved now are great people, we want to keep them there, we want to support them, and we want to help them grow. But we gotta get more people involved, so we gotta make it easy, we gotta make sense of it, so we get more people involved to keep the place open. So that's my presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, do you partner with Westshore College at all, on any plays or different functions?
Yeah, Westshore College has worked with the Civic Players, they do a couple shows together. Name, I can see his face. Rick, Rick Plummer, from Westshore. Him and I met when I first started, and him and I have an appointment next week to talk about doing some booking together, maybe bringing some of the events that he does up here. And, I mean, he's, that group, Westshore, I think is one of the players that we need to talk to, and see if there's any interest. You know, what kinds of things could they do up here? I mean, I just don't know what, what their interest, what their capacity is.
I think it's the first good start. What do you charge for weddings?
Weddings for the ballroom, grand ballroom, is $1,500.
Okay. That includes the kitchen and catering?
It just includes the kitchen, bagels, chairs, and a site manager. It also includes, they get two days, Fridays open, so they can come and set up and decorate and do that sort of thing. And then they have all day Saturday, so it's a two-day commitment. And the weddings I've, weddings I've worked, people seem pretty happy, and it's a great space to have a wedding in. I'm not sure we're gonna need to do too much advertising, there's a lot of word of mouth, it seems to, I'm quite busy with the wedding business.
I noticed your next show is on the 19th, is Big Band Retrospective? And I asked a question on Facebook, is there any chance of getting Glenn Miller Orchestra in? Which is still in existence, and that's what I was wondering, if possibly you could do more big band?
Well, and that's one of, you know, I think there is a market for, given the age and the demographic of this area, for big band music. You know, so I think that's definitely something that we want to do.
I'm not at the age, but I was raised, my parents love me.
Right, I can throw that in.
There's also, I think, a market for true bands and that sort of thing, I mean, that's kind of what the casino does, and maybe we can do some of that. And, you know, and maybe that's the sort of thing, when we talk about mission, you know, just being an entertainment center, maybe that's an important part of what we do. And, you know, what does that mean, given the context that you do have a casino right there? So we don't want to compete head-to-head with them. You know? We don't have the kind of resources they have to be in that particular market. But maybe there's some other things that are related to that, you know? Like big band, are they gonna do a lot of the big band stuff? I don't know. And I did check into the Tommy Dorsey Orchestra. You know? And looked at, you know, what their routing is, and it might be a little expensive for us, but, you know, if they happen to be in the area and we can get them between here and there, we might be able to do something happen. And I think they would do quite well.
I know, I'd be there.
And that's like one audience saver, you know? Something we should talk about, whatever we do for our young people, we have a, you know? So what kinds of things would they be interested in, and that we can do at the Ramsdale? You know, what are millennials interested in? What's Generation X interested in? You know, they want to be more participative. Like for our young people too, I think there's a great market for, there's a great market for young people. I know the Civic Players do some children's shows, but there's groups out there that will come in and do workshops for three weeks. Maybe in the summer, that'd be a great way to get 40, 50, 60 kids involved in a workshop over the summertime. But those are, those are kind of the things that we all need to work together and get on the same page on, because I don't want to compete with the Civic Players. I want us all to say, "Hey, these are the things that we need to do, let's work together and help each other." Because some of the things that happen right now, we kind of almost have like three systems going, because, you know, everyone's kind of independent, for good reason, because they've had to be. They really haven't had a choice, if you want to do things done. And so how do we kind of bring those three systems into one system? You know, just be much more efficient. Every time we do an event, we won't have to go out and recruit, you know, people for every single event, we'll have those things in place. So there's really, I think, a lot of opportunities.
I hope you don't completely discontinue showing movies there. I did enjoy seeing the movies there, and I think you can do that without appearing to compete with the Vogue. So I hope that's an avenue that remains open.
Yeah, it seems like, because it's such a cool space, I can see like, you know, old masterpieces being really fun to see there, like musicals, that sort of thing. I mean, I think that would be a lot of fun. But then people are gonna love bringing popcorn, so we gotta, you know, talk about that, get on the same page, and that sort of thing too. Some people, just the thought of bringing pop and popcorn in there, I'll just go crazy, so. You know, but those are the things that, as a group, as a community, we need to talk and decide about, so we all, or most of us agree. And that the people who are able to support us agree to. Because most nonprofits like this rely about 40% on contributed income. Well, we're nowhere near that, so we have a lot of work.
Contributed income being fundraising?
Fundraising. Grants, fundraising. That's average, you know, across the country.
I have a question. Mike, you talk about we need to come together and develop a strategic plan, mission and values, and a vision. Who do you see taking the lead on that? Is that what you're gonna do? Is that what you're looking for council to help with? Because, you know, I've been involved in a lot of strategic planning over the last 15 years, and I see those type of pieces fit well into a strategic plan, and the mission, you know, develop your mission and values, and your vision for where that's to go. But you definitely need somebody to champion that and move that forward. And I know from sitting on this panel for the last year, we're very supportive of what's happening there. Otherwise, you wouldn't be standing in front of us today. But we are looking for some leadership in a respect to help us in that respect, so how do you see that happening?
Well, it is my responsibility to lead it and to keep it moving. So I put together a proposal, what I think the process should be for getting people together. Now, the board hasn't necessarily, the RGA board has it, they looked at it, they didn't necessarily prove it, there was a little discussion, not that much. I don't know if that's the right group of people, you know, that maybe it's too early. The Friends of the Ramsdale, I mean, that's a group that needs to look at, to look at that. I mean, right now, the really key thing is to get the key people involved, so I've been like, I don't know people here. You know, so I have to rely on other people like Ed, and like the folks from the Civic Players, you know, say, "Okay, who are the key people in this community? Who are the influencers?" Who are the influencers? Who are the people who know something about, maybe like yourself? You know, who know something about developing a strategic plan, getting that mission, you know? It's, it's, it's really, it's really important to get the key players, and we don't want to make this like a really, you know, really long, drawn-out process, because I think if, when you start getting down into it, it's gonna become pretty clear what needs to happen, the things that need to happen. You know, there's lots of really great examples of theaters out there, there's thousands of historic theaters out there in small towns, you know? So there's lots of examples that we can draw from. We just need to take a look at it and say, "Yes, that looks, that's something that would really go over here." You know, that would be great. And I can do all the research, you know, and I can put the pieces together, but really need some leadership from the community, who knows people, you know, who have resources, who care about it, to step up. Um, you know, I wish, in some ways, I wish I was the real kind of charismatic leader that could come out and really rally the troops, you know, and say, jump up on, you know? But I'm an outsider. It's gonna have to be someone from inside.
I think it gives you a unique perspective as well, though, because you have been out in different areas. And again, I think from, from my perspective, because I don't want to be here in a year talking about the same type of things, mission and values, and where we want to be as a program. I'd love to see, you know, some, some legs get underneath us and, and really start to, to develop some form. So, you know, from a conceptual standpoint, I see an idea, but, you know, I, I'd love to see, you know, more of what, you know, the, the direction you'd like to take, and how we can support you from a council's perspective, because we do have some of those influences and some of those contacts, and maybe conduits to other, uh, uh, resources that could help. Maybe obviously you look at it from a programming standpoint, and a, and a funding standpoint, and a maintenance standpoint, and a, you know, rental standpoint, there's a lot of things that go into that strategic plan that would make it successful. But, you know, how do we know where we fit in best if we don't see some more detail to what your, your direction or your ideas are?
Sure, and I have some things that I could share with the council, that I've already put together, that might be informative to kind of the situation, you know, so there's some, some background that I've been sharing with the RGA and the Friends of the Ramsdale that you may find useful. I think the, one of the things that I'm doing in the next week or two is meeting with the individual groups, and in talking with them, it's not that I wasn't welcome, but they didn't really see what my role is, and they still don't necessarily see what my role is, you know, because I'm kind of from the outside, I'm kind of in charge of things, but not really in charge of this stuff at all, you know? And so there's been a lot of issues between city, the governance, and the way they've operated, because they were in charge at one time. You know, it was their place, and now there's all these other people coming in and telling us what to do. Well, before we start bringing other people in, we really need to get all that stuff out on the table, you know? We need to get it out there.
True.
You know, so we all understand what it is, and some of us are gonna say, "Yeah, you know, I agree with you, we need to change, you know, we need to do some things differently." And I'm afraid some people are just gonna say, you know, "I don't care. It was this way, and we want it this way now, and if we can't have it that way, we're gonna be gone." And that, and that may happen. But we, we need to, we need to come up with, get everything, make things discussable, get it out there, and see who wants to support what.
Yeah, you're talking about a SWOT analysis with key, key decision-making, each of those key areas, and, you know, what are the strengths in that area, what are weaknesses, what are the opportunities, and what are the things that we feel might be threats to our way of life that we've had before? And I think that's, that's critical. Again, those are the kind of things that I think, you know, we'd like to be helpful and supportive of in that respect.
And you know what? A lot of that SWOT analysis has already been done. It's already been done with the White Paper. It's already been done by Tom. It's a matter, though, of getting everyone together and looking at it, and making decisions, and agreeing that, okay, this is where, this is where we want to head, this is the direction we want to head, you know? And, and saying, "Yeah," you know, the reality of, I mean, I get the feeling that the groups that we have, they feel like they're overwhelmed, that they're at their capacity. I mean, that's the sense that I get from them. And maybe they're not, but maybe there's more opportunity there than they realize. And maybe if we start looking at it and think, you know, a little differently about it, about bringing more people in to the things that they're already doing, or finding ways to, you know, like the arts is, does tons of great stuff, but as far as, you know, revenue generating, as far as that sort of thing, there's nothing happening, you know? Well, maybe if we could get together and write some grants, do some things together that we can get some money that way, you know, or from a foundation.
True.
But we have to work together and get on the same page in order to be able to do that. And that's, that's kind of the challenge right now.
Well, I was trying to get across, too, is really to, we want to support, we believe it strongly in this program and the Ramsdale, and how could we help you be successful?
I appreciate it. And I guess the biggest thing is just, you know, what do you want to see? What, what are you willing to support?
You know, I want to see? I'd love to see. Whenever you're wicked, I understand that. But we've been many times going out and seeing my, Mama Media, those, I want to see the traveling groups come up. I want those lights on. That's what I want to see. I'd love to go there. We drive all the time out there, we go down, we're going to Chicago constantly, you know, to take, take the kids to a play. I'd love to see big, you know, bigger pro, broad. I, I drive to Grand Rapids constantly with my kids, at least twice a year, you know?
Part of that problem, though, is the seating capacity.
You know what? I don't even, you can't give me that one, no. I disagree, sorry.
Because that's, every time I've tried to call to check into booking things, when they hear what our seating capacity is, they're like, "No."
I would just comment that the seating capacity is probably appropriate for the market size. This is not a good market. You know, I booked at Flint, you know, we had about four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people to draw from. We, you know, I booked Mama Media, I booked those shows. We just do not have the capacity. Now, that's not to say we can't bring in something that's that same, you know, musical kind of Broadway style. It might be smaller, you know? It could be really good, but right now, I personally would not bring a real highly professional group, because I don't have the systems in place for the tech support. But that's something I need to work on, though, and get, and-
You ask what I want, that's what I would like to see.
Can we work on it in stages?
Can you do whatever you want.
But that, you know, and that would be great, you know?
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Move on to concerns and comments. Citizens and comment, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments. Mayor limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to comment? Please state your name and address.
Ross Spencer, I live on Eighth Street in Manasty. My concern is with, I guess, a procedure the city council is using. I came to a city council meeting on December third, and I observed what happened, and then when the minutes came out, the minutes were different. They didn't reflect what happened. And I thought, maybe I just didn't understand, so I watched the pay commission and renewed it. And what I saw did happen, but the minutes had been changed. I don't think that's right. I don't think you should be changing minutes between the time you'd have a meeting and when they're approved. So I would like you to figure out who's ordering minutes to be changed and ask why that happens. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, move on to officials and staff. City clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City manager?
Just a reminder, Your Honor, that next Tuesday, the fourteenth, the strategic plan will be talking about two things. Strategic plans on my mind. The work session will be talking about the strategic plan update for the city of Manasty, as well as, we will also be discussing the request from Mr. Singh regarding the peninsula industrial use, and those two items will be on the agenda for next week.
Has it been before the Planning Commission, or?
The Plan, Mr. Singh, Mr. Singh approached the Planning Commission last Thursday, made some brief comments to them. The Planning Commission have this scheduled to be on their work session on the sixteenth, which is two days after the council discussion. Is that correct, the sixteenth? Right, so, they, they have it scheduled for a work session discussion also.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
DPW Director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cody?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Horkel?
Yeah, I just want to thank the street department for all their long hours in the last three, four days. They've done a, a great job on the streets.